Good evening, welcome to the council meeting October 7th, 2025.
Five, five.
If anyone.
Excellent, okay.
It was made. If anyone in the audience needs to have my headphones, then raise your hand, I'll bring those to you shortly. Right now, Sandy, let's rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, United States of America, to the republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, in his law, the routine and justice for all.
All right, Mary, your roll call, please.
Yes, I will. Councilmember Velecian.
Here.
Councilmember Sterns here. Councilmember Gilmore.
Here.
Mayor Nisco.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Sherman here. It looks like councilmembers. I'm here is here, sorry. Councilmember Zach and Councilmember Gutierrez is not here this evening.
Move to excuse Councilmember Gutierrez.
Thank you.
All right, most of us second to excuse Councilmember Gutierrez, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post that most of them carries. All right, is there a motion to approve that consent agenda is published? I'm sorry?
Skip page.
Oh, I do. Are there any late changes for the agenda? All right, city manager.
Senator.
All right, that's why I want this meeting over. All right, the council have any more reports to share? All right. I did today get to speak with the 12th grade Sycamore High School, it was very engaging, the kids asked questions and it was mostly all questions for the full hour. They talked about replanting the forest after development, they talked about homelessness, they talked about Cota Street. So it was very engaging, it was a very, very nice conversation with all the kids, they had lots of questions and I really invited to that. All right, is there a motion to approve consent agenda as published?
Preferably consent agenda as published.
Okay.
Right, motion is second to approve consent agenda as published, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post, post carries. The council invites the public to make comments on matters of city business, comments will be made to the entire council and not individual council members. Please refrain from making personal disrespectful remarks that create disruption to the meeting, if unreasonable disruptive conduct continues, you will be asked to leave the meeting. Mary, do you want to set up general public comment?
Yes, we do, Mr. Mayor, our first speaker is Thomas Wolf.
Hello, welcome back here, my name is Thomas Wolf. Now, I wrote a little something to actually talk to you guys today, I figured it's a lot better than telling that to you guys, and I'm glad we got so badly to make out. So Mayor Eric and members of the city council, I'm here tonight because you have repeatedly failed the people of Shelton. There is no other way to say it. Your choices are clear, you are either doing this badly on purpose, or you are simply not capable of doing your job. You were elected to do, I am tired and the city is tired of the mess you have created. We know you're using the continuum of care to bring in government money, but this money is not fixing the problem. It is making our city a disaster. You were using these programs to make yourselves look good, but we see no real effort, you have listed your power and hurt this city badly while you were in office. You waited until the election year to pretend you care. You only started trying to deal with the homeless problem and fix our streets because you want to keep your jobs, and that was at the beginning of this year. Your idea of doing your job is planting flowers and trees on street corners. We do not need a pretty city when it is rotting on the inside. You have failed us all by disregarding our local economy. You chose to help big corporations instead of small family-owned stores and employer neighbors. You have run almost every small business out of this city. That's a shame. You have let homeless camps turn our city into an eyesore and a dangerous place, and I'm saying that coming from Seattle. You supported big city ideas that do not fit with the conservative community you represent. You have ignored our streets, leaving them in terrible unsafe conditions. This city is a disaster for our youth. There is nothing for the kids to do. This town has no future in mind for the young people who live here, and they know what's they, the kids are, too. Your actions show you do not care about us, and what you did on Cota Street is a perfect example of your poor planning. That street design looks like a child's road with a cramp. Every bad decision you have made is a sign of disrespect to every person in this room. You have lost the right to leave. You need to resign immediately and never hold a public position in office again. I don't like any of you. And everyone else is willing to be nice to you, but I am not willing to do that. I don't care how many police that you start bringing in here, I don't care what the public says, I do not like any. I don't see any real change in this city, I don't respect you, and I think that each and every one of you should resign and let people who actually give a shit about the city to start staying up here and doing the jobs that you clearly cannot. That's all I have to say today, and I'm going to be shown out by a lot more of these meetings. I don't like you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Annie Hatmans.
Good evening. Thank you, Mayor and councilmembers, for the opportunity to speak this evening. I hope you find running to say a little bit pleasant. My name is Annie Hatmans, and I'm the outreach specialist with the Youth Connection, serving both Bell Bear and Shelton communities. In my role, I spend much of my time in the out there connecting with young people who are homeless or at risk, meeting them where they are, in our schools, in local parks, and on the streets. In September, our Shelton Center serves 527 young people. And our Bell Bear Center welcomes 15, including several new faces. The numbers have dipped slightly since school band session, but our centers are busy every day. Through our care team, we help four young people move into permanent housing and prevent additional households from becoming homeless. Every one of those outcomes represents a life change, and a young person now has hoped for a safer, more stable future. A big part of our daily work is making sure youths have access to food. Many who come through our doors rely on us for breakfast and a hot lunch. Often, you only meals they'll have that day. We also keep six off-site shelter housing programs stocked. Unfortunately, we are extremely low on food supplies right now. As the number of take-home food bags and the meals we serve continues to rise, our shelves are struggling to keep up. To help, we believe the Youth Connection is posting a food drive haunted house on October 24th, 25th, and the 31st, in the Shelton upstairs area before the remodel begins. We are also parking several local coffee stands and banks throughout Mason County to collect food donations during holidays. I want to say thank you to city manager Mark Sagler for his support with the chip print, which is helping to move our transitional housing project forward. This project will create 12 units of safe support housing for youths who currently have nowhere else to go. We are now in the final stretch, working to complete our housing trust fund application. This week, if awarded, we will be fully funded and complete project. It has been a long journey, but we are so close to turning this vision into a reality. Youth Connection remains fully committed in preventing and ending youth homelessness in Mason County. With your continued partnership and support, we can ensure that every young person, no matter their situation, has the opportunity to become a contributing member of our society. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Basically, all. Next is Angie Jewitt.
Obviously, my wife and I both support you, she's still, good job to them. I want to talk to you about an issue that affects every one of us, how we attract new businesses and invest in Shelton. It's no secret that our city is facing a budget deficit. And the best way to close that gap isn't just by cutting, it's by growing. Growth means more jobs, more tax revenue, and more opportunities for our residents. But here's the hard truth, no business wants to invest in a city that looks neglected. Just take a look around, our streets are dirty, sidewalks are broken, curbs go unpainted, weeds are growing up to the cracks, and graffiti is spreading faster than it is being removed. Public parking is scarce, and visitors notice that. When people see that level of disrepair, it sends a message, and not the one that we want. And then there's the issue in our parks and public spaces. Vagrancy and camping, street camping, continue to be a problem. Brewer Park is a perfect example. People are moved out, and then they come right back with no accountability. It's a revolving door, and it's discouraging for residents and business owners who are trying to take pride in this community. So I ask, where is our leadership? How do we expect to attract and retain new businesses when our own public spaces don't reflect the standards we claim to stand for? Economic development starts with presentation and enforcement, showing that Shelton is a city that takes care of itself. If we want growth, we must first set a good example. This means enforcing existing ordinances, maintaining clean and safe streets, restoring pride in our downtown and neighborhoods, and demonstrating that Shelton is open for business and worthy of investment. Leadership isn't just about planning, it's about setting a tone of accountability and pride. Let's make sure that Shelton, we show the world, is the one that we can all be proud of. Okay? When you do a Google search of Shelton, and about livability and walkability, where do you think we fall? Go home, do a little homework, just do it, just check. You don't do very well. And that's per capita. Did you know that Shelton was the number one in overdose deaths per capita in Washington State? That comes straight from our coroner, Jamie Taylor, and there's several more that they're still investigating. So, what are we going to do about it? I don't think anybody up here is a bad person. Okay, I don't. I think that everybody has good intentions, whether I agree with those intentions or not. But intentions are only intentions until they become an action. So let's take positive action and positive steps, not negative ones. Let's take care of our town, take care of us, take care of the vagrants and the homeless, and get them to services. If they don't, if they don't accept the services, then they go away. Thank you.
Next is Jackie Jewitt.
All right, Jackie Jewitt. Uh, okay, so at the last study session, there was a discussion about the need for more proactive approach in enforcing our existing ordinance. I want to follow up on that tonight, because ordinances are only as strong as the enforcement behind them. Specifically, I'd like to ask about the shopping cart ordinance. Has the city levied any fines on stores for failing to secure their carts? And how many carts have been collected by city staff? And what is the cost to taxpayers, how much does that cost to us? In addition, I'd like clarification on our no-street-camping ordinance. I'm confused. So how many citations have been issued under this ordinance? Have any non-compliance letters been sent to property owners who are knowingly allowing camping on their properties in violation of the city code? Uh, these are important questions, because consistent enforcement, consistent enforcement protects both public safety and the integrity of our ordinances. And finally, with community lifeline shutting down, has the city refused to submit their conditional permit? Given that they reportedly owe over $400,000 to the IRS and state agencies, and can owe an additional $300,000 to the county if the building is sold within the 10 years of the water system improvements? Is it appropriate to maintain their permit status? At the very least, this seems like a situation that should be closely reviewed to protect this city's interests and ensure fairness. My question tonight is simple, please provide transparency and accountability on these issues, and take a proactive approach, proactive approach, so that ordinances are not just words on paper, that that's what they are right now, but tools that truly serve and protect the Shelton community. So, I've been doing a lot of research on Shelton myself. As a matter of fact, I've been doing more research than him, and so, uh, which is quite a lot. And, you know, I, 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 the primary in Shelton, per capita. Does anyone know what it is? It's worth, you know, we're really high up there, we're like a number one. Uh, uh, 10 more cities to live in, Google it, Shelton's on there. Yeah, good old Shelton, that's what I want, that's what I want our city to be known as. Is it a top 10 worst cities to live in, top 10? Out of all the Washington State, imagine that. I didn't Google how many cities are actually part of that. But I'm sure being in the top 10 is an honor for our mayor. Yeah, must be. Thank you.
Thank you, Jackie.
Thank you. Don't give up on them.
How about you, Sandy?
I'm sorry?
That's all of you.
All right. Moving on, we have a present, a domestic violence awareness month presentation that's going to be read by Councilmember Sterns. Sorry?
Sure. Yeah. Whereas the city of Shelton recognizes the need to bring awareness to the impact of domestic violence in our community by, by shining a light on this critical issue, encouraging opening, open dialogue, and reinforcing our shared commitment to prevention, support, and building a safer community for all. And whereas domestic violence is a serious public health and safety issue that impacts individuals, families, and communities across Mason County and beyond, regardless of age, gender, race, religion, or socioeconomic status, and whereas the devastating consequences of domestic violence can cross generations and last a lifetime, affecting physical and mental health, financial stability, and overall community well-being. And whereas Turning Point Survivor Advocacy Center and other dedicated community partners provide critical services, including emergency shelter, crisis intervention, legal advocacy, prevention education, and ongoing support for survivors and their children. And whereas raising awareness about domestic violence helps to break the cycle of abuse, support survivors in their healing journey, and prevent future violence through education and community involvement. And whereas during the month of October, communities across the nation come together to honor survivors, remember those lost to domestic violence, and recommit to ending abuse in all its forms. Now therefore, the city of, the city, the Shelton City Council does hereby proclaim the month of October as Domestic Violence Awareness Month in the city of Shelton, and calls upon our community members to support efforts to build a safer, healthier, and more compassionate community.
Thank you, councilmembers, is there anybody else to speak on the domestic violence? Look at the microphone.
I'm thankful and executive director of the Court of Survivors Advocacy Center. And I thank you for proclaiming and to end domestic violence. More than one in three women and one in seven men report having experienced great physical violence and your stocking by against their partner. And we invite you to take action and to see domestic violence for what it is and what's happening. Turning Point is committed to violence prevention, but it takes our community to end domestic violence, and we can interrupt the cycle. It takes commitment, it takes education, and most of all, it takes speaking well. Abusers by the silence of government. Take action by attending Turning Point events by encouraging domestic violence awareness. We need a business after hours is at Turning Point tomorrow, October 8th. The Clothesline Project, October 9th through the very first, is at Turning Point. A Story of Resilience Concert, October 17th at Bay Bluefront Church. In Pursue Simulation Training is October 18th at the YMCIA. The Empowered Dinner and Auction is October 24th at Boulder Brook at 6:00 p.m. And In Their Shoes Simulation Training for our youth is at YMCIA on the 27th. And we can take further action by volunteering with charity. And I want you to always, always check on your friends, and your family, and your loved ones, and call Turning Point's hotline if you know someone's experiencing this. And on behalf of everyone we serve, thank you for proclaiming on those domestic violence laws.
Also, I want to make it aware that it is Breast Cancer Awareness Month, and probably in two weeks, we'll have another proclamation for that. All right, up next, Dwayne, Dwayne here?
Dwayne isn't here tonight.
Oh.
We'll skip over that.
All right. We'll skip over an LTAC report from Lucrez Festival for another time. All right, at this time, we're going to go into our business agenda, engineering technician Kenny Olberg is going to introduce a new employee that will give us his first presentation.
Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers, Kenny Olberg, engineering technician with the city. I would like to formally introduce our new store owner technician, Patrick Hoffman, Pat, he's all in. He has been a godsend, especially for me, but he picked up a very complex job and figured it out very quickly, and has done nothing but with it. Takes a lot of worry out of our minds, and extra tasks that we all no longer have to worry about, since he's taken care of us.
Thanks, thank you.
Nice problem.
Welcome.
Uh, I'll say a couple things about myself, I have a hard time presentation. My fifth is easier to follow with this, and it's about the. Uh, so I'm going from managing the parks to the city of Des Moines. And, uh, I've worked here for Renton, in the general area for uh, three months now, four months, and planning it to buy it. Happy there. Now, I'm presenting on a compost improvement ordinance, which is a amendment to chapter 8 of the Shelton Municipal Code, um, adding a new section, 8.08.04. And this is just a brief summary of what we're going to be going over. And how it helps us, so a lot of the slides are going to be related to, um.
They get ahead of you, Patrick, sorry.
It's all right. Um, but as alluded to there, um, a lot of the slides are going to be related to the YMCIA RCWs that prompted this recommendation. Um, and I want to also touch on different ways that, um, it's also going to help the community, our community and the city. Um, so Washington State Legislature enacted House Bill 1799, um, which required the city of Shelton to adopt following two RCWs that are showing up there. Um, so a little bit of details about these RCWs. Um, RCW ending in 150 is basically qualifying for which cities are required to adopt these ordinances, and it also has the majority of the details in the presentation we're discussing today. And as the RCWs are interconnected, the RCW ending in 120 has additional details that expand on utilization requirements. Uh, so together between those two, the following slides are going to focus on the RCWs and how our ordinance follows those, and also processes what our needs, so. Okay, so the RCW requirement, um.
This slide. Uh, let's go back one. We go back one. There we go.
Okay, um. So the RCW requires the city to essentially continuously evaluate, um, whether or not those can be used in specific city projects, products that we're already doing and planning on doing in the future to the city. Um, and when compost can be utilized, city departments shall purchase compost for use in the city projects. And there's a lot of specifics and exemptions about those two statements here. I'll add into a little bit more, but, um, just want to mention that the purpose of this ordinance is not only to adhere to the RCW, but also to be reasonable and a fiscally sound decision. Um, yeah, so. Um, we're going to tell the projects that we shall use compost in based on the RCW requirements. A lot of these, you know, compost already gets used in by, you know, public works and, uh, construction companies, but landscaping is the most commonly known use of compost for, uh, usefulness and people every day. Um, but additional uses that are required by the RCW are construction and post-construction soil amendments, um, specific stormwater applications and improvements to the sustainability and longevity of roadway application, uh, and low-impact development and green infrastructure. Um, and a couple of these things kind of go back to the, uh, NDA permit that Kenny was speaking to, and all the headway that he has made with it in the last, the city has made with it in the last three years, and um, now looking at the history, and there's a lot to do still, so um, a lot of these, like, the stormwater-related ones are things that are already being done, but there's just some, uh, some minutia, minutia that's added on with these RCWs. Uh, this is the basic before and after image of pre-compost and fall and spring those composts. Um, no fertilizer, and this is, you know, a very easy implementation of compost in the city, which would require perfectly much, and you could use those on parks and such, things such as that. Um, and the thing what is, I haven't mentioned, and I'm going to get to here in a couple slides, is that these RCWs are not only focused on compost use, but it's sustainable, local compost. Um, so it's all based upon using stuff here that was made, uh, it basically happened in the general area, close by.
Would, would that include our, or sewer soil we make?
Class A biosolids, I think is what you're referring to, right?
Yeah, probably not for this requirement. Uh, there's a lot of stuff that you have to go through to meet ecology standards for these, and they actually have a map, uh, compost map for Washington State, and it shows all the, a lot of the areas close by, um, that they may be able to meet the, uh, standards, but that would also be a question you need to check with, uh, Brent and ask, ask Norm, because I don't know that, I'm sure about that, so. Um, and yeah, so the, some of the exceptions we have, um, through the RCW would be compost products are, do not need to be used when they're not reasonably available. Um, available compost products uh, do not comply with purchasing health, quality, or safety standards, but not if you use them. Uh, and compost purchase prices are not reasonable or preventative. And so I emphasize the word reasonable, and there a couple times, that's part of this ordinance as we adopt. opposed to adopt the RCW is making sure it is, uh, something that's feasible here and, um, not, not a burden to implement. Uh. So the city shop fires I purchased, um. Just back to um the question of the specific compost, so it's locally produced compost. Um, compost that is certified by nationally recognizable organizations. And compost that is derived from municipal solid waste uh programs. So, um, basically we're taking the city's own organic solid waste stream and we're required to track where it goes and the volume of where it goes and then find where it's processed and implemented within the city. So essentially reusing the compost gear that is collected, putting it back into the city and uh that's a lot of what this R C W is uh aimed at, so. Yes. Uh, reporting for to me on my end with the uh. So for public works by March thirty first of each year, we have to report three things to accommodate for the previous year. Uh, there's a total ton of organic material diverted from city, from the city. And so what facilities they were sent for processing and accomplishing, um, the volume and co- uh and cost of compost purchased by the city. And the source were sources of the compost we purchased and this can include compost used from, you know, developers and things as such, because they they were a lot of times are using compost and we can just point them the right direction with what specific compost based on evidence. Uh. So yeah, that's that. Um, and then there's also a education aspect of the R C W. Uh, so the city is responsible for conducting and coordinating educational outreach in the former residence about the value of compost. And part of our N P E S stormwater permit, we cooperate with Mason Conservation District. And they, we work with them for public outreach and implementing additional public outreach for this, um, be of little to no cost, easy to do and um, also link back to that the existing stormwater permit ecology. Uh, so. And yeah, how does this help us? Compliance with White State legislation, um, promotes local manufacturing and locally sold products. And it promotes sustainability, but then it has immunity. So, um. Yeah, those are the uh, that's what I have and I just want to, if any questions, or any.
All right, let's get a reading and a motion and we'll come back to you.
Okay.
All right.
I'll do.
Mary, may I read ordinance number two zero three three dash zero eight two five?
Ordinance number two zero three three dash zero eight two five. In ordinance, the city of Shelton, Washington, amending chapter eight point zero eight of the Shelton Municipal Code to add a compost procurement requirement in compliance with R C W four three point one nine A point one five zero and R C W four three point one nine A point one two zero.
Thank you, Mary. Do we have a motion?
Move to move, I'm moved to place uh ordinance two zero three three dash zero eight two five on the action agenda.
Second.
All right, comments or questions? Now, this is based on a compilation of twenty five thousand, so we're not really getting into this right now. We're just adding this to the code.
Yeah, so the the requirement in the R C W is um, that we have to do this because we have organic material collection service through Mason County garbage recycling. And um, one of the other qualifications is yes, twenty five thousand, but it checks with uh ecology multiple sources. And we are based on uh after seventy eight point two oh five to another R C W with our, you know, talk about, but um since we have garbage recycling, they waste management through uh Mason County garbage recycling. Absolutely.
All right, any comments or questions? All right, we have a motion in a second to forward ordinance, ordinance number two zero three three dash zero eight two five till October twenty first meeting for further consideration. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Posted, motion carries. Great job.
Thank you everybody.
Right, you. Next, we have a resolution related to crosstown trail design, Assistant Public Works Director, Aaron Nix.
Mayor, council, thank you. Pleasure to be here. Uh, just a quick comment on on what we just discussed. City in common has been using tag row. Well, if you guys heard that, it's basically, it's a percentage of the biosolids that's produced by the wastewater treatment plant. It mixes with sand, with some other things, they create pot, fine soil, it's close to mother things. There are some pretty cool things that they're doing. They're actually making money.
That's kind of what I thought with our with our treatment plant was the same thing.
Yep. What I'm here to talk to you tonight, uh, it pertains to the walkability and kind of the niceness, trying to improve that here in the town. Um, you received a grant for two hundred thousand dollars in order to uh start design work on the crosstown trail. Um, you have the materials in front of you. You also have a map that shows in scope in essence, it's from Neyland Park all the way out to one oh one. Uh, with the desire that maybe ultimately it will tie into the parking ride that's out there by one of one. As a, as an alternative means for transportation, walking, cleaning up the area. Um, our staff, our facility staff have been actively out on that rail line, cleaning all the debris and everything else out as well as uh trying to get rid of the vegetation to make it look nice. We've run into a lot of trash, we've run into a lot of everything, but we're making it better. So I just want to make you aware of that and hopefully you go. So what you have before you is a task work order, um. I will not be managing this project, Jordan, uh, Crumples, um, our first supervisor will be. The idea that we're going to get out to the public, we're also going to start design work on potential amenities. Originally it was discussed with maybe a twelve foot A trail section throughout the entire, yeah, that's what we're going to look at. But the idea that at the end of this, we're going to have a shovel ready project that we can sell to our CEO, the other big money people, so that we can move forward. Help us down, similar to what we're doing with the downtown sidewalks, we come here shortly. Thirty three sites are going to get repaired, um, we're going to need those backwards, so. Just want to acknowledge those events. But again, the council have already approved, uh, the acceptance of these grants, these Harvard Commerce Grants, two hundred thousand dollars. What I'm looking for is uh kind of just looking for questions and other things that you may want to know about this as well as you'd like to move this into the action agenda, because we want to get to work. So with any questions, best needs on having an answer.
Right, Mary, may I read the resolution number one four zero three dash zero nine two five?
Resolution number one four zero three dash zero nine two five. A resolution of the council of the city of Shelton, Washington, authorizing the city manager to approve a public works on call consultant foster work order. Provide funding on the crosstown trail project in phase one with Keller Associates.
Thank you, Mary. Do we have a motion?
I move to place resolution one four zero three dash zero nine two five on the agenda.
Second, thank you. We have, okay, comments or questions?
Mr. Mayor, if you don't mind, um, I want to recognize our thirty fifth delegation. This this funding was a direct appropriation from from that delegation in a previous legislative session, so it just recognizes the work they're doing for us locally and supporting projects, not only um not only our our water infrastructure, transport and roadways and transportation projects, but this multimodal trail as well.
Absolutely, definitely appreciate our our support from our thirty fifth delegation. They are always coming through, so that's a hint, hint for next time.
Yeah, I mean, add to that, we also got two hundred fifty thousand dollar grant to move forward with phase two. And phase two is going from Wallace, Neyland to Marina. So that will be, I needed to get this one out and get design going. As soon as I'm done with that, I'm going to start making the next set pot of my reel. So that in essence, we're going to have a shovel ready project in a year or two to build that.
Shit, thank you.
Sir.
We have a motion in a second to place resolution number one four zero three dash zero nine two five on October twenty first council meeting agenda for further consideration. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Posted. Question carries. All right, first action item is Assistant Public Works Director, Nick.
Similarly, at our last meeting, um, we discussed some of the major purchases that we need to make with regard to our fellow workers. Very hard for the individuals, as I also mentioned to you at that last meeting, most of the equipment that we're utilizing at least in this particular piece, I'm saying we've gotten some newer stuff. Most of this is about thirty years old. Equipment that has gone beyond typically you will give it a life expectancy and then uh you look to replace it. We never did that. We basically said, let's keep running it, running it, running it. Um, and that, that's one way to do it, but I think you'll find um that it costs more money, um, just because you're trying to put more uh trying to keep it running. Yes, so what you have before you is the councils had a budgeted last year of over six hundred thousand dollars for the purchase of a backhoe. Um, as well as backhoe loader, um. Crack ceiling machine, a hook lift truck with accessories that will allow us to follow a bunch of different things, junk, water, uh, a bunch of different materials. It's similar to with those trash trucks that you've seen that has the hook. It goes down and will lift that thing and pull it up. Um, we're going to have that paper. So again, I, everything that I just presented here is similar to what we discussed at the last meeting. We're going to see about hundred thirty six thousand dollars spent less than what was actually budgeted, so went through state procurement, got better deals and we're ready to move forward. Happy to answer any question.
Thank you. Uh, Mary, anyone sign up for public comment? May I read a resolution number one three nine nine dash zero eight two five?
Resolution one three nine dash zero eight two five. A resolution of the city of Shelton, Washington, authorizing the city manager to sign purchase orders for acquisition of B M and R equipment maintenance and rental fund, vehicles and equipment as adopted in the fiscal year twenty twenty five.
Thank you, Mary. Comments or questions? And Paige, do we have a motion?
Can you introduce our resolution one three nine nine dash zero eight two five as read?
Second.
We have a motion in a second to adopt position number one three nine nine dash zero eight two five as written. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Posted. Motion carries. We have another item, Aaron.
So this is a, I can add originally that I had discussed with you. I promised you guys pictures. Got pictures, yes. Um, these are, this is actual pictures of the existing equipment that we're trying to get rid of. Crack ceiling machine as well as the nineteen ninety three Chevy pickup truck is in there as well. With the desire that we want to, these need to be serviced us. Um, I, as I mentioned at the last meeting, our policy is anything over ten thousand dollars needs to be improved by you've got supposed to move forward. I included a compliment there that are under, under that threshold because I'm trying to be transparent and show that getting rid of equipment with the new purchases that we make. So I wanted you guys to be able to make that connection. Now you have pictures, you can visually see uh what this equipment is like. It's ready to go, we're ready to build, so hopefully we can prove this resolution to all this.
Thank you, Aaron. Anyone sign up for public comment?
Yes.
All right. May I read the resolution number one four zero zero dash zero eight two five?
Resolution number four zero zero dash zero eight two five. A resolution of the city of Shelton, Washington, declaring vehicles and equipment surplus to the needs of the city and disposing of such vehicles and equipment for common use.
Thank you, Mary. Do we have a motion?
I move to approve resolution one four zero zero dash zero eight two five as written.
Second.
All right, comments or questions? Right, we have a motion and a second to adopt resolution number one four zero zero dash zero two five as written. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Posted, motion carries.
Thank you.
Well, fair.
Mark. I'd have heard you, U S A manager report.
Couple of things for you tonight, Mr. Mayor and Council. Um, update on Cota Street contract will be out there tomorrow, hydro stripping the the lines, so it's a high pressure washing machine that'll take off the lines, it'll have temporary, you know, lines put down immediately after that. But the roadway needs to dry, um, we'll do long line striping, so you know, um, uh, what do you call it? Dash lines down the middle of your center line and then city crews will come in and put T's and L's in later on the uh, on the parking stalls. Uh, so that may be after a a weather window, um, looks like we're going to get some rain late in the week and through the weekend, but that might be through the weather window, but we will have temporary um, striping on the road. Um, budget, it's budget season, as we all know, we had a productive study session on the twenty third. We're scheduled for public hearings on the fourth and eighteenth and final approval on December second. Our finance department is working feverishly, shorthanded to get that information ready for you to consider on November fourth, so I really appreciate their time and effort uh, working on that, but uh we encourage the public to uh engage in that process and and uh and come out to those meetings or view those online to um see where the city budget is being proposed for twenty twenty six. And then I want to recognize our thirty fifth delegation, Senator McHuen and Representative Griffey, who joined us last week to talk about uh city legislative priorities, what they saw coming up in the short session, um, with probably little funding available, um, not a whole lot funding available, but we had some productive discussions about transportation elements, um, potentially looking at um shifting focus from the Wallace Spring Road intersection to Wallace Olympic Highway as that is kind of rising to a greater need and uh in the community and seeing if we can get some uh, support from Wash Dot on that as they basically own half of that intersection. And the western half that we see uh most kind of the failures on as well. And then looking at our continuing water infrastructure needs, our um, our storage capacity. And then uh potential sewer projects that would add to um housing um inventory in our community and how we could potentially extend and piggyback on some federal funding that we received for the Spring Road Sewer Project uh last year. Uh, and try to get that project complete, passed, uh, past design and get uh get that sewer in the ground and uh add, add for uh add capacity and availability for uh new housing projects and maintain some affordable housing projects in that area, so really appreciate their efforts. We'll bring to you later this year our legislative priority list for your consideration and approval before we send it off and make our specific request before the session starts.
Right, any questions for Mark? Right, this council, how can you do my session? Correct, or next meeting or study session on the fourteenth is complete review of steering committee, land use, transportation, housing, hazards, hazards and climate. And our next business meeting on the twenty first of October would be uh, presentation for the financial status report, the chamber of commerce, uh LTAC report. Uh, business item, we're going to have an intent to adopt the twenty twenty five comprehensive plan. Uh, no public public hearing on that day. Boy, a public hearing on that day, the twenty first?
For the comprehensive plan, it should be, yes.
And then our action agenda will be everything we discussed tonight, so um, our next, well, actually. Our meeting is adjourned it. Check for an imp.